Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Tuckerton Borough Council, July 21st, 2025. Anna Clark, would you please read the Open Public Meetings Act?
Yes, provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act have been complied with as notice was published in the Beacon and the Asbury Park Press Dating and Time Date, please.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland.
President.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Colangelo.
Here.
Mr. DiAmore.
Here.
Mr. Dupree.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
Thank you.
Let's stand, please, for the class.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's continue with the legislation. Please, Councilwoman Breland.
I have done the opening of the House of Representatives.
All right, next is finance. You always have a lot.
I do.
Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a second reading of three ordinances tonight, as well as two resolutions. All three of these ordinances, we will open for public comment, one by one, as we go along. So first, I have ordinance number five of 2025. It's an ordinance for the Borough of Tuckerton and the County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, providing for the acquisition of a trash recycling truck and appropriating $330,000 therefor, and providing for the issuance of $313,500 in bonds or notes of the Borough of Tuckerton to finance the same. And at this time, I would like to make a motion that we open to public comment. Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second to open to public comment. All only questions on this ordinance, as was just read. Does anyone have any questions at this time?
Doing all in favor.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, does anyone have any questions?
Seeing that, I'll make a motion to close public comment. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close public comment.
And then, I move the, oh, sorry.
All in favor?
I'm jumping you this time. And I make a motion to pass ordinance, or adopt ordinance number five of 2025. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance five of 2025. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. DiAmore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. My next ordinance is ordinance number six of 2025. It's an ordinance of the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 223 of the Borough Code of the Borough of Tuckerton entitled "Solid Waste" as to revise the rules and regulations pertaining to garbage collection within the Borough of Tuckerton. And I make a motion that we open this ordinance to public comment. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to open for public comment on ordinance six as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any questions or comments from the public on ordinance six, as was just read?
Sorry, I didn't know what I had.
Oh, sorry.
Carolyn Key, making for public. Is Section 6 one about the trash can lid being down all the way?
Yes, the overflow of trash and the fines that are associated if you violate that.
Thank you. I'm hoping you guys pass that, because being a full-time resident.
Okay, okay.
You have to speak fast.
I'm sorry, I've been talking this all the time.
I know, I'm hearing you.
Sorry. How is that going to be, um, accorded? Will the trash folks who are picking up, if it's open?
We'll coordinate with the trash people that are picking up. Our superintendent of Public Works and Code Enforcement, um, to do it. So, yes, if they're out on the route and they see a trash can that's completely overflowing and trashes all over, it'll get reported back to John Pathan, and he'll report it.
So, I know it's been a month, but have, did you say it won't, if it's not closed all the way, it's, won't be picked up, they'll just kind of, or is it?
How it's worded is that the trash can lid has to be closed and sealed, so that animals will not be getting in, stuff like that, so.
But if it's not closed and sealed, will the trashmen still try to get it onto the truck, or will they just leave it there?
I would think common sense would prevail.
Would prevail, yes. You know where I'm going with that, right? We're full-time residents.
There's got to be an adjustment period for all of this stuff.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Real quick, though, it's just assessing a penalty.
Yes.
So, I don't believe, let me just double-check myself real quick, but it doesn't say anything in here that the guys will not pick it up. It says that there will be a fine assessed.
That's what I was trying to clarify, thank you, Jenny.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
There are times, though, that they can't pick it up. If it's piled up way too high.
Well, if it's, you know, if it's up over, like, the can is completely open and you have things all over, they're not going to be able to pick that up. There'll be a fine assessed, and we're going to have, but we're going to have a meeting to discuss all these scenarios and how we're going to handle it.
I'm just going to let go of Mr. Colangelo, let common sense prevail. Hopefully, it gets picked up, because you know what happens, right? With the ordinance, so we're the ones that are here, are picking up, because.
Mine's going a little fuller, like, power leads and stuff, right? I know.
So, and they can always put to the audit by another one, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
Seeing that, I'll make a motion that we close public comment. Ordinance six.
I have a motion and a second that we close public comment on ordinance number six. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All set.
And I move ordinance number six of 2025. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance six as read tonight. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. DiAmore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have ordinance number seven of 2025, which is very much along the same lines, except for it pertains to recycling versus trash. So I have ordinance number seven of 2025, ordinance of the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 223 of the Borough Code of the Borough of Tuckerton entitled "Solid Waste", so as to update recycling regulations. And I make a motion that we open ordinance number seven to public comment. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I have a motion that we open ordinance number seven as read for questions or comments from the public. Do we have anyone who has a question or a comment?
I have no questions.
All right, can you come up? Say your name and address.
Robert Holland, next, Carol. With the recycling and all that, I've been there for 27 years, and it's been getting a little worse and worse with the talk of the garbage recycling. Can you maybe notify homeowners? There's a lot of new ones that come down. I speak to them, they don't even know you're open Saturdays and Sundays. Can you put a flyer in a mailbox, maybe, something as simple as that? And it would maybe settle a little adjustment to what you're talking about right now? Easy enough?
Easy enough.
It might help?
And I also, something that's on my list is to make sure that the Public Works website page has all the rules and regulations clearly done, and then we could also put out a next one.
Yeah, there is quite a few elderly that may not be computer-embossed.
All right.
So, that's what I'm saying, there's a simple letter in the mail. Hey, recycle is open seven days a week, this time to eight, this time of hours, season to season, does your hour change after this day?
The plan is, usually, it goes into the tax.
I'm sorry?
The plan is, usually, we put a letter, because it becomes costly when you start mailing all this out to everybody, but the plan is.
Even in the, even in the, uh, paper, the free paper?
Or, or in the tax bills?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's how we, that's how we typically do something like that.
Yeah, just make them notify, warn them, because lots of them eat that. The new change is every 10 years, they see the new cycles. Just make them be aware, because that's all, they're like, oh, we didn't know that. And then once you have the garbage piled up, recycle piled up, bed frames out, dressers, and they're sitting there for three, four days, and plug them down.
Yes.
We'll drive them picking stuff up in the washing. That's all, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Speaking of?
Seeing that, I'll make a motion to close public comment. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to close public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I move ordinance number seven of 2025. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance seven of 2025 as just talked about. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. DiAmore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. My next, I'll move on to my resolutions. And my first resolution is for the payment of claims for this month. This month, we have $655,607.13 going out in checks. Of that, $551,251.60 was the levy for Tuckerton Elementary School. So I have a resolution for the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing payment of claims in the amount of $655,607.13, and I move this resolution. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on authorizing the payment of claims as presented. Are there any questions from anyone in council on anything? Seeing that, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. DiAmore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you. My final resolution this evening has to do with the Clean Communities Grant and authorizing the insertion of 200, or sorry, $2,581.02 into the 2025 municipal budget. I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing a Chapter 159 for the fiscal year 2025 Clean Communities Grant for the 2025 municipal budget, and I move this resolution. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution as read. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. DiAmore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And then I'll have one committee report later, ma'am, but that is all I have for now.
All right, moving on, we're going to go to Public Works, lawyer and suitor, Council President Colangelo.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I have three resolutions this evening. One has to do with the purchase of the side loader, another has to do with the purchase of a chassis for roll-offs, and then we're hiring a laborer in the Public Works Department. I also have a few announcements to make. The next bulk flare disposal date is August the 20th. Anyone interested has to look at the information online. The document shredding program, we're finished for the spring. The next one in the Little Lake Harbor area isn't until October. And finally, we have no local places to go for disposal of household hazardous waste. We'll have to wait until next year on that one. I have a resolution in the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, warning contract with Rand Turk, an authorized vendor of Sourceville National Purchasing, contract number 110223, the LEG for one LeBrae 42-yard top sec select side loader in the amount of $196,162.60, and I move this resolution.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution as read. Again, I want to ask, are there any questions on this?
This is the recycling part.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. DiAmore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
I have a resolution in the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, warning a contract with national, an authorized vendor of Sourceville National Purchasing, contract number 032824, the MDS for the 2025 International HV607R2 chassis. This is for a roll-off, and the amount is $131,909.77, and I move this resolution.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution as read. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Finally, a resolution for a Tuckerton, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing Eric Belayas as the full-time laborer in the Public Works Department. He will receive salaries in turn to the length of bargaining in the agreement of Lucas 16, and I move this resolution.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution for a full-time laborer. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. DiAmore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay, fine. I think you're going to get the prize, too, for spending the most money. All right, next is public buildings and grounds and community affairs. Councilman DiAmore.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing this evening.
Okay, listen easy. Administration and Regulation, Councilman Dupree.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have several items on the list for tonight. First being the approval of minutes from the last meeting, also a fire EMS report, and assessment on liens as well. And then a little later on, in the committees, I'll call forward the environmental committee committees on, and I'll have Paul come off if you have it after minutes. Chief of the chair.
Paul's very welcome to get up and say.
Okay, with that being said, has everybody had a chance to see the minutes from the previous meeting? Any council member have any changes or additions? Did I so move that we accept the minutes as written?
Second.
I say I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes from the June 16th meeting. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. DiAmore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And then the second item I have on the list is the assessment of liens upon dwellings or lands for property maintenance pursuant to Borough Ordinance 103-2, commanded by NJSA 40-48-1.14. I so moved that we follow through with the assessment of liens.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second on this resolution. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland.
I abstain.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. DiAmore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, Your Honor, I have the Code Enforcement Report for the month of June. On-site inspections were 24, violation, violation notice is sent or seven. Bulkhead inspections were four, open violations were two, violations cleared were five. For upper requests. Public order cleanups were two, calls from homeowners were 19. And that's my report for the destruction and code enforcement. And at this time, I'd like to call forward Captain Steve Shapiro from the station, setting the fire, EMS with the public report.
Ian. So the Tuckerton Borough Fire Report for June of 2025. Fugertown Fire Company responded to 21 fire calls and 22 EMS calls in Tuckerton Borough. So thank you. Any ideas for, or anything more?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, very good. Next is Law and Public Safety, Councilman Piers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a monthly activity report for the Police Department for June 2025. Calls for service were 329, arrests were 21, motor vehicle stops were 152, motor vehicle summons were 74, motor vehicle accidents were 14, medical was 33, suspicious person and vehicle checks was 23. And that's all I have until the committee report.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Busy, busy month. All right, so I have a resignation from our secretary, April Ellie, who is not going to be our secretary anymore, so I need to have that accepted, please. Someone make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept her resignation status.
Kind of regrets.
A second with regrets.
All right, so I have a motion and a second to accept April Ellie's resignation. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Uh, yes, with regrets. April's been a wonderful secretary for Pride and Celebration for six and a half years.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. DiAmore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And then I also have three appointments to the Environmental. Number one is Vincent Louricella.
Mayor, may I, um, I have it, the terms and stuff?
Okay, sure, sure.
Um, but can you just tell me that last name, Vincent?
Vincent L.A.U.R.I.C.E.L.L.A.
Okay, so I have a resolution in the Groucho County, Ocean State Committee, appointing members to the Environmental Commission as follows. An unexpired term to expire on 12/31/2027 is John McCornick, who was originally an alternate member. I'm moving him up to a full member.
Okay.
I have unexpired term to expire 12/31/2027 is Paul Salamani. He's an alternate going up to full member. And then I have an unexpired term 12/31/2025 for Carolyn Key. And then I have alternate number one with an unexpired term to expire on 12/31/2025, Lisa Dunn-Woodie. And then I have alternate number two for an unexpired term to expire on 12/31/2026, Vincent Louricella.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept all four of those. Second. Or five minutes, sorry.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on all of these appointments to the Environmental Commission.
Before, one of these terms, I believe, was Caitlin Ullman, so I need you to accept the resignation of Caleb Prior, too.
Oh, okay.
So, keep that in your mind. And then if you would do a motion to accept the resignation of Caitlin Ullman, and then, then adopt the resolution.
Would you like me to make that motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion that we accept Caitlin Ullman's resignation.
Second.
With regrets.
Okay, and then now the resignation.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to accept the resignation that's already been sent in. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes, with regrets.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. DiAmore.
Yes, Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And then a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion to accept all five of the appointments.
All right, so I have a motion and a second to accept all the appointments in the order that you read them.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. DiAmore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's all that I have at this time. So, Mr. Barnes.
You have nothing at this time.
Okay. And Bart, do you have anything else?
I do. I have a raffle application requesting waiver of fee for the Tuckerton Library Association for a raffle to be held on November 15, 2025.
Make that work, Paul. Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to accept this raffle application for November 15, 2025, from the Tuckerton Library Association. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo.
Yes.
Mr. DiAmore.
Yes.
Mr. Dupree.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
That's all I have this evening.
Okay, very good. Do we have, I have an executive, do we have any need for an executive session? I think that's all right, correct? So, let's see.
Can you start?
I would like to start.
We have a bunch to carry here for us tonight.
I have Brian, I don't have your last name there, sorry.
That's fine. So for Tuckerton and Brian's celebration, we've had the first two concerts of our summer concert series, the last two Fridays over at the All Wars Memorial Ball Field. Granted, the weather has been perfect, both Friday nights, which was very lucky for us, but it's been great turnout. So we've had over 200, 250 people each of the Fridays that were there. We had a band Stranger Things play on the 11th, and last Friday was Ray Vaughan was playing. It's, it's a really nice atmosphere. It's fun to watch, the kids are out in the outfield of the ball field, running around, playing, having catch and stuff, all the parents are up. It, so far, has been a, a great community-oriented field. People are hitting together in groups to picnic-ing. We had, chilling out ice cream truck has come to both of them last week. Seabreeze Pizza came out, and they were set up in center field. It was very nice.
I can hear it great from my desk.
So the next, oh, and this last week, this last Friday, we took up a collection for the Tuckerton Food Pantry. And generous donations, we ended up coming up with $239 in donations to the Tuckerton Food Pantry, just by Bunny and Renee walking around with hands asking for donations.[1577.72]
Good, good job.
So it was very nice. We have four more concerts to go. This Friday coming up is the Mal Santos Group. The Friday after that, which is August 1st, is Later Days Blues Band. Then on August 8th, it is Go Rock Yourself. And we end out the summer concert series on August 15th with Joey D and Johnny B's Rockin' Oldies, who I think was at the TBA on Saturday night, right? So if you have not made it out yet, the concerts, like I say, they're every Friday night, 6:30 at the All Wars Memorial Ball Field, which is on Bay Avenue, right here in the center of town. I recommend you come down, at least check one out. It's a good time. It's a very nice atmosphere. And that's all I have for you.
Very good, okay, thank you very much. Mr. Dupree?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. I gotta say thankfully, we've filled every position for the first time in a long time for the Environmental Commission. And I'd like to congratulate Beth Garvin as our chair. And of course, Kalen, I'm sorry to see her down. She's done a lot of great work. Even though she's still gonna be here doing the Tuckerton Garden Club work as well, but she's definitely gonna, we're gonna see a loss of her because she's had a lot of energy today in her mental condition. But Beth, I don't know if you have the minutes, but I know Paul, he records it, so I don't know which one of you wanna work up and give a slight report.
I didn't record it this time.
I knew you'd say it.
Well, I didn't record it this time because we had the secretary. And what happens when AI records stuff? If multiple people talk, AI gets confused and it doesn't know what to do. So we experienced that with one meeting, AI recorded. But I think we wanna get to keep the bank account going. So we accept donations, arrange money possibly at the Duck and Decoy Show or the Flea Mortgage or whatever. We have to talk about a lot yet, and it may not happen this year. The downtown planners, excuse the expression, but they look like shit. There needs to be, something needs to be done about that. The ones with sunflowers is pretty cool. But, you know, Kayla Kane was on, she wanted to remove the trees, and there's some that don't have anything in them. So that's where we're at, from memory. But anyway. See you in a little while.
Yep, that's good, okay. That's you doing a good job. You gave everybody...
I think you talked about when you told me to teach you. Don't break math.
That's right, I didn't know we worked together that way, too.
A 30-minute lesson on three plus five.
Let me show you. Okay, very good, thank you. So now we're down to...
Mr. Peterson, Mr. Peterson has a...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay. Happy to say the Economic Development Committee has been working on putting together a Chamber of Congress for Tucker. And I'm happy again to say that it is just about 100% completed. You can go on our website, there's a webpage on there. Just put in Tuckerton, or Tucker in Chamber of Congress and it'll come right up. On the 30th of July, there's a meeting at, their first meeting, at LBI National Golf Course. Everyone's invited. The more people can come, the better it would be. So if you have the time and free, I mean, it's 6:30 to 8 o'clock. Am I right with that thought? 6:30 to 8, right?
I don't, I don't know the, I don't know the meeting take, I don't know the kickoff.
It's an LBI National, and we'd really like to have a good showing. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay.
Mr. Peterson, is that... So on, on August 21st, is, isn't there the kickoff at Hotel LBI?
That was the 30th, July 30th. That's what I was told.
Okay. I'm pretty sure it's August, I'm pretty sure it's August 21st, but it is on...
It's on the website.
But it is on, yeah, it is on Tuckerton, TuckertonChamber.org. And they have a calendar on there. And it's listed as August 21st at 6:30 to 8:30 on that calendar.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
All right, so it's Tuckerton Chamber dot, or not Tuckerton Chamber of Commerce?
If you Google Tuckerton Chamber of Commerce, it takes you right to it.
Okay.
But the physical address is TuckertonChamber.org.
Okay.
It's a very, very nice-looking website. They did great with photos and videos.
That's good. We've got, we've got a lot of things going on lately. So this is, this is very good. All right, now we're ready. Anyone else before we go to the public forum?
Move it open to public forum, second.
All right, and a motion and a second to open public forum. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will entertain questions from the public. One second. And you'll state your name and your address. Mr. Edgar, do you wanna go first? And we have 5 minutes left.
My name is Lee Edgar from 121 Little Lake Terrace in Tuckerton. First thing I wanna mention, maybe some of you heard already, you guys paid like $300,000 for an ambulance equipment and let the volunteer first aid squad use it. So a couple weeks ago, there was a call on North Green Street, and Galloway Pay Service showed up. And when I asked around to find out what happened, it turned out that the volunteer squad that has to insure our ambulances was up covering Stafford and Marnigat that day. So our residents get billing service instead of the ambulance that Tucker just paid for with volunteers. I personally don't think that's right. Maybe you wanna look into that. There's some things I wanna talk about from the, what we said last meeting. What I'm gonna tell you is the truth, okay? There was a statement here, mainly, that damaged fire equipment was sold to Beechhaven Fire Company. It wasn't. That was stuff off the ladder truck that was stored inside. We sold it to them for a bit price because it was on that truck. We wanted to help them out because we're in the same county. And we did it. The damaged equipment is lost on the firehouse, rusty as hell, and stuff that was outside on the bumper of the rescue truck. And you're welcome to come see it, you can too if you want. That was a blatant lie. About the, there was no illegal entry into the firehouse. I just wanna give you an example. Let's say you had a metal box. And you give it to somebody, say, here, hold on to this metal box and take care of it for it. And then while you hide it, you decide, ah, it's a nice box, I'm gonna hide a couple thousand dollars in here. And then the owner of the box comes to your house, illegally enters your house without a warrant, without permission, and takes the box with the money in it. You think that's a crime? That's very good analogy to what happened though, so you're gonna think the way you want. The first offer to settle was $10,000, it wasn't $35,000, we rejected. It's on paperwork, it's on campus paperwork, and I can get them for you. Okay, we accepted the $35,000, but it was not for half of the year, if you look at the paperwork. We didn't even go the first half year, it was only about five months. And that was 20-some thousand dollars. And anybody who wants to think that the boroughs went away, gave away $35,000 just to be good guys, better get their head examined, okay? The thing about the fit testing that was passed happened. We were late fit testing, Jenny had written a letter in our defense that we had tried our best, everything we could to get it done. We were late, it was during COVID, that got settled out. But it was brought up again in that mess. So we did meet every, we can prove, we did meet everything in that agreement that we were supposed to meet, except the fact that you were gonna pick out whose opinion was, we had, you chose Donald St. And we have another court case going with him. We're gonna, if we get our day in court, we're gonna prove that was all a lie and you're gonna have it on your face. Okay, now, at the last meeting, Councilman Dupree said, the Fire Company Facebook page is a private person individual. That's not true. I can put things on it, I do put things on it, but I'm not even the administrator. There's certain things I don't know how to do. And if you wanna come and be the administrator, I can arrange that. That's totally untrue. I and anybody I've talked to in the Fire Company don't know who operates the Little Lake Harbor incident alert page. I'm familiar with it all, I've seen it on there, but I don't know what it is, okay? Now, there's something mentioned here about paper in the town with open requests. Well, we do that to get information, accurate information, so things that go on our Facebook page are true. And a lot of times we put Facebook posts on there, we have documentation on there, whatever we can. So we did an open request for the mobile home fire in Met. And we got that a couple weeks ago, we just looked for it over the weekend. And lo and behold, thank God the cops didn't do it, but Fire Chief Frank runs it, it's on video, you get a cop yourselves. Give him, give him a cop, you know, open request to the fires, two videos, Miller and Grant. And on one of them, Chief Frank runs it before he even put out the fire, he comes over to the police officer and says, arrest that motherfucker, Lee Edgar. He's in a effing danger zone. I was across the street on the back side. The public was right next to the pumper, so I wasn't in a danger zone. It's in the video, look at it. And if the police, I know what the law is. I was a firefighter, I was a mayor, I was a police officer. I'm not gonna do anything wrong. You don't wanna take pictures because we have people in Parkertown that participated in getting us put out of service and getting DLD certified. And we're gonna return favor, and I'm the front man on that because I have nothing to lose. I'm gonna check out in a few years. I don't want the young people to have to put up with the crap, so I don't mind putting up with it. But you have a problem. Now, when you have a chief that comes and does that, and that's the way he runs his fire company, and you have the councilmen up here telling lies about Facebook pages, and there's talk here about Parkertown having juniors, look, you're in your right mind, mustn't let our kids run around people like this. Are you aware that some years ago, Parkertown Fire Company was shut down for the weekend and Tucker Nichols was voted to get rid, Frank runs it? Because of something that he did wrong, they should have been charged for? And they took him out to put George Barberage in as chief? Ask George.
All right, your time is up, it's only five minutes.
Well, you let somebody here at the last meeting go, eight minutes, hypocrite. I don't agree with that, see you later.
And Your Honor, with that being said, I do have to straighten something out as far as EMS services go. As anybody in here knows, we have quality that will cover our area when we get tied up. They charge your insurance company. That's how it works. Galloway is the same way. It just so happens Stafford will come down here and do a backup calls course when we run short. Galloway does the same thing. We return the favor. So we had a slow day, there was a call in Stafford, so we took our ambulance up there to help them out, they had a cardiac call. Then we had a basic call here, and Galloway, me and we were up there, came here. The answer is, would you rather Galloway come up here and charge your insurance company or let you be there alone?
Wait till he...
He will tell you that. Unfortunately, he is one way, and he doesn't want you to know the real truth. He wants you to know his opinion. And unfortunately, his opinion is gonna wind up hurting someone seriously. He's driven several fire companies from responding to Tuckerton, and that was his goal all along. He's upset now that Parkertown is providing safety in a way of fire protection and also EMS, and that he does not like. Because he thought that he had us over barrel and that he was the only company around that could serve the people of Tuckerton. Well, he found out wrong, and unfortunately for him, driving the other companies away, he's not gonna drive Parkertown away. Parkertown is serving the people of Tuckerton valically and every day, 24/7.
We have a good relationship going.
Absolutely. And I have a officer there, I will admit. But I was a member of Tuckerton Fire Company, and I put up with a lot of nonsense over the years in Tuckerton. He doesn't want you to know what I know. And there's gonna be a point in time when it will come out at the right time. And that man is the cause of 99%. And he's not gonna tell you that there's lawsuits that were led against this town because of him and his sons. But you can look that up on the internet by looking at his name. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for explaining all of that. And we are working on everything, we're keeping things on the leaping heel, and we're working together with all of the area fire companies. So, does anyone else have something to say?
I have, I have some ideas. Thank you. Hi, my name is Bob O'Connell, I live at 111 Parker Road, and I'm one of the residents who lives within a 200-foot radius of this proposed multifamily condo project.
Okay.
So I have several questions and comments. The first of which is, something this big and major, I don't think it impacts just the people within 200 feet. It impacts the whole community. I think there should be transparency. I think those plans should be published on the borough's page so everybody can read them and review them and digest them and make educated decisions on whether or not they oppose it or if they're for it. So I put a Facebook post out there. I started a petition to oppose it, over 250 signatures in just one week.
All right, that's...
So my question is, at the Thursday board meeting, the council here said, it's out of our hands, it's within the DEP. And my follow-up question was, well, that's for a portion of it, right? The builder, his proposed plan looks like it's within the buffer zone required in rules and regulations by DEP, it's a 150-foot setback for wetlands, for freshwater lands. A portion of it, per his survey, is within the wetlands. So he's gonna have to request some kind of waiver. So my question is, if somehow he gets that through DEP, who in the borough, there has to be people who approve the building permit, there has to be land use that has to approve the type of dwellings he wants to put on there, which is multifamily, which would be the first in the whole community. It's all single-family residential homes. So has anybody in the Tuckerton Board or Council made decisions on this? Is this a foregone conclusion that if it goes through NJDEP, he's got a rubber stamp and he's gonna start building this?
As I was mentioning, at land use...
Just before you guys start speaking, and I can refer to the... At this time, nothing is before any of these, any of us. It's only before the DEP. Council is a board that if, they have to go before the land use board for multiple approvals, which I'm sure they will, as long as the DEP goes through their process. And they are the appeal board. They cannot have an opinion, nor can the land use board have an opinion on that. Can I please finish?
Go ahead.
They cannot have an opinion because what will happen is the attorney for this group can come in and say that every one of these individuals and the land use board have their mind made up. We have to stay neutral at this time, or else it will get removed out of our jurisdiction and will not become before us. So I personally feel that at this time, we have nothing in front of us. What has gone out is, and this happened 10-plus years ago, somebody has come before, did put in an application similar to the DEP. They had come to us, there was a road that had run through there back in the day. We vacated that road. They had gone and gotten same type of plans, I do have it right here in front of us. And the only reason why I have it in front of me is because by DEP standards, state of New Jersey standards, requires that the municipal clerk hold a copy of it so that you can view it. It doesn't mean that we have anything to do with it right now. I know I jumped ahead, but I don't believe that the original person got approvals for their, the wetlands, for the freshwater, or the other line verification and a CAFR permit. So I know it's scary. I know that it's a lot of concern for everybody, but I would ask that please do your due diligence, but try to keep the council and the land use board neutral.
So you answered my question, nobody's made a decision yet.
They can't.
So what would be my kind request is that once, if it does get through DEP, that the concerns of the citizens are taken under advisement? Because this builder's gonna hire experts to do studies and plans and say, oh, there's not gonna be flooding, and there's not gonna be damage. It's gonna be a biased, skewed study. He's paying them to do it. The outcome's gonna be justified his. I wanna know, are we gonna have a chance to have a forum and challenge those findings with our own? Because it's gonna flood. Everybody knows that area's prone to flooding. If you take away wetlands, whatever volume of water those wetlands served and buffered, it's gonna go to the adjacent properties. And then the flooding, the impact of that flooding is gonna be that much more severe. Is he gonna pay for our houses to be razed? Is he gonna pay for the road to be razed, or the degrades to be raised? Is he gonna pay for the damages to us? Probably not. So that's my two cents on that. And then the last one is the zoning. It's my understanding that's E1 zoning. There's a whole list on the Tuckerton website with the E360 code. Multifamily dwelling is not included in that. And if multifamilies allow here, it's also my understanding that the state has mandates that X percent of multifamily housing has to be low-income. We don't wanna open up those levels. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, there will be a mechanism for you at the land use, is the first one, sir. And that will be, again, you'll get notified if they do come before the land use board. They have to send out the same exact type of publications to people within so many feet. I think they have to post it in a newspaper?
Yes.
The notice has to go in the newspaper, because I'm sure there will be barriers as needed.
I'm Beth Jenks, Beth Garvin, so on 9th and 10th Street, Tuckerton. Who ever thought I'd be in an organization where I wasn't allowed to have an opinion? Oh, and I don't. My question is, I, since I have no life, I went to the Little Lake Harbor Land Use Board on Ju-, July 3rd, because I wanted to see, and here with the traffic coordinator for the proposed 50, I think it's called Summers Corner. So I'm gonna keep my comments to myself. But he had an emergency, so he's gonna be there at the next minute. I called the councilman just to see if anybody from here was gonna go. Debbie and I went and a couple other people from Tuckerton, just to hear like what, like where. It's 450 people. So he's gonna be at the next one. Is anybody here care, I mean, not, I don't mean like care, but is anybody, wanna come with? To hear this traffic guy? Because from what I understand, the plans, the traffic coordinator report that was done in February, isn't that convenient? Is on their website. But like, I don't understand that. Like, maybe one of you can walk me through it, or I'm just gonna go hear him talk. But are we concerned about that, like coming through to come in?
When you get the information, you can send it to me, and I'll make sure that everyone in council gets it.
What, from when the traffic coordinator's there?
From the next meeting is that you talk.
Oh, it's the first Thursday of the month. So I think it's the 6th, 7th, I don't know.
First Thursday.
I did get your message by mail.
I told you it was an emergency.
And it is, no, it is unfortunate that their meetings are the first Thursday of the month.
I was saying you were...
No, and it was July 3rd, because I was, frankly, getting ready for parade and fireworks and everything.
Well, I did say, I hope you're having fun somewhere, but I just wasn't...
No, I was not.
Okay, that's it.
I apologize, I was not.
That's it, thanks.
I made my mind.
And it's not fun getting ready for that. Good evening.
Good evening, again. Paul Salamani, 28, we're in Drive Tuckerton. Recently, we had a Paradise Cove have a party. And we were in a bit of a bind because of the weather. Last minute, I called Parkertown Firehouse and he let us out the party at the firehouse. They stood behind our community, helped us out, which was awesome. We had Mike there and a junior fireman. And the junior fireman, he was very helpful. He got all the thing, Hershey kisses, it was awesome. That's my plug for Parkertown Fire Company. Now, I'm getting ready to the downsides and I have a park bench that I wanna donate to the town. But there's a caveat. I would like to see it go on Route 9 for the people that wait for the bus that work at the great find and people from Paradise Cove. But there, I always see people on the southbound side standing there waiting for the bus and I have nothing to sit on and wait. So I'm more willing to donate the bench, but I'm not putting it over there. Hopefully, I can work out something with Johnny and we'll get it done.
Call Johnny and...
Yeah.
You probably just have to call DOT approval to get it.
Yeah, D-Trans, transit.
Yep, and then we'll work it out.
Does it name a bus stop?
Yes, it is. It has a sign and everything, yeah.
Yeah, they have to...
They approve it. They just have to, like, when we wanna put the covered bus stop in place, we just have to get the D-Trans and JDOT to approve it all.
Oh, donate the bench, you know, so. About six months and then, if you guys can't pull all the six months, I'll get rid of it otherwise.
All right, thank you very much. If you need to, if you need it out of your area right now, because if, we can always put it in the public works yard.
Okay, that sounds good. I'll just get rid of it before I put down some money.
Jenny, I would also check with John with Hannah's first, but do have room over, I made room over in the garage where it'd be covered and safe.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, thank you for your time. Mike Kuchar, 143 Water Street. There's a couple other gentlemen here that have the same concern that I do. So what we did is, I wrote a letter to you folks. We're requesting some assistance. So Water Street's a very dangerous situation. I've lived there for 30 years. So I did, well, they said, I think Ken's lived there longer than myself. They have children, they have dogs. There are folks, nice folks that walk by at night to go to parties and things. The street is not that wide. There's even some, you know, you pull out of the driveway and it's, people are driving, well, everybody knows they're all driving Mach 1, I don't know where they're going, but looking at their phones, it's very dangerous. Thank God my girls are not there anymore because, you know, where I come from, we try to, I was talking to some officers three years and they said there's nothing they can do. But it's very dangerous there. Especially now it's all been done since Group 9. You know, to come down, it never was opened up before, I don't think. So it's even more traffic now. So what we're requesting is there is just something we could do. I wrote a letter here and I put down, various folks on the street signed it. I was wondering if I could submit that. I made six copies, I don't know if you'd like me to read that or if you folks would like to read it. Okay. And I also took some pictures of speed bumps. I know that it's not good for the plows, but there are various towns around that we don't know about that have initiated speed bumps. And this is a pretty high-tech one because it's not very invasive, but if you're driving too fast, it's gonna make a difference. I mean, where I pull out, my wife, I, I, I mean, I, my daughter comes on a weekend to visit us. I put an orange cone out, I think Dave puts cones out because he's got children and dogs. People are flying by and when you try to ask them to stop, they wanna fight you, you know? I mean, it causes another problem. So, before something happens, I think this is a matter, I don't wanna be, you know, we can't predict the future, but it's just a matter of time. I was mowing the lawn the other day and I happened to, I'm not, you know, as young as I was, and I kinda lost my balance and a car came flying by. If I, you know, fell, I wouldn't be here speaking to you. So, we just wanna go on record to, please, please look into this matter.
That's what this forum is for and I thank you for this and we won't take our time and read this and speak to the chief.
Appreciate what you all do for the town. Pardon me?
What's the house number and why were you...
143. And just, and just sort of something else there. When I pull out, my wife pulls out. I mean, a lot of times I'll go on the street to make sure somebody doesn't get hurt, but I pull out where I am, there's bushes, you know, the street, there's people with bushes right there, you can't, you can't see. And, you know, look, I don't give anybody a hard time, but I got a family protecting, there's other nice people that are walking, you know, and we had the fireworks the other night. There's all kinds of people walking.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so it's nice to have that, but at the same time, it's dangerous.
Not to make light of this situation, but we used to have a remedy for this. It was a pothole, it was a big pothole. Then people complained about the pothole. We fixed it and we made a new problem.
I don't wanna complain so much.
No, no, it's not.
Where I come from, I'll be honest with you, my father was, all mill, my father had five brothers years ago. And when someone sped off the street, they all got in the car and they went up and took care of the matter. You can't do that anymore. My wife must be a hard woman. This dog still made us a couple dollars.
We need to be careful with these kind of things and we have to do something, but it, it, it came about that that actually...
That's not bad. I'll never be able to start digging something out.
One intended, one's consequences.
We definitely will count on it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good evening, Bob Kowski, 1141. I had to go off the speed bump in a different manner.
Did you say your name and address?
Yes. Live on Carol Avenue, Bob Kowski. Speed bump, more so in the lagoon, coming out of Tucker Creek, coming out of the bay. Just doing brief research, looks like it hasn't been dredged in 60 years. The last thing I've seen was the public notice, August of 2019. Questions along with my statement. Who's responsible for dredging the beginning of each lagoon? Not the whole lagoon itself, but up to the sewer drainage for the streets into the creek. Is that federal or is that state or township?
So, I'll give you, I'll give you a brief synopsis. Is that nobody is responsible for dredging it. The Army Corps of Engineers has a project that, what you said with 2019, where they are, were scheduled to dredge Tucker Creek. Along with that, and this was before me, but I was filled in on it, was they said that as they're dredging Tucker Creek, they will do the mouths of those lagoons as they go up. So it was a nice courtesy, then COVID hit and that project kind of went away. And then it appears that they just picked up, but instead of losing, like going back and everybody was pushed back, they just skipped forward to be back on track again. I've reached out probably about six times now to the Army Corps of Engineers trying to get an update for when they're planning on circling back to Thompson's Creek. And I've, the best response I've gotten so far is, "I will look into it and get back to you." Or Thompson's Creek, I'm sorry. Paul Soling has got me hooked on Thompson's Creek.
Right, it's creating several issues. Parker, Carol Avenue, that lagoon, they righted the mouth. The no-wake buoys kind of appear, the ones that state puts out, which they put out till July 4th weekend this year. And when you contact them, yes, for one up the creek in front of the lagoon, you just get full of info and that's for years.
So Tucker Creek would be federal?
Is 100% state, no.
And federal, right, or state, that's it. But the mouth, but the mouths of the lagoons technically are mine.
Right, contact the Ocean County State, New Jersey State Police who handles the maritime for that. It's multiple residents contacting multiple years and it's always the same answer. So is there anything the township can do for the residents to try and push for something? Now, I know one resident had a flag made on their property saying, "No-wake." It didn't go so far. Issue you're running through now is everybody's speeds past the no-wake buoys. Now we're creating a speed bump coming through the mouth of the lagoon. Lagoon has been dredged, it was privately dredged over 20 years ago by one of the residents, has been dredged, God knows since when. There's one occupant on the lagoon, he's less than 12 inches, he's in the muck. Right there, I'm in the muck, 12 inches low tide. It's just, we, we have, our hands tied. If we can't get that dredged, there's, there's nothing we can do. You can't get out certain tides, paying a ton of money, taxes for property, looking for some kind of maintenance, it's very minimal. On top of that, anything we can do with the boaters that are coming out of the marinas? Because they're just the wave runners, they're going out, they're flying up and down, regular boaters and they're long-time boaters too. I'm not talking young guys and new residents. They might not realize it either, what, over 20, 30 years? It's just creating speed bump and these guys can't get out. Paid a lot of taxes, they have high-value boats, can't swim in there and God knows what's in there since Sandy came through. So, on top of that, I'd like to make one other thing, my still time. The marsh coming up the creek around the bend, just by Shelter Cove, that marsh is now getting overrun at tides. I left my house for the meeting tonight, it was 2.4 feet. Carol Avenue's already flooded. This is a daily basis, no longer seasonal. Really, really hard, street sinking. Anything we can do to build that marsh up, repair the street? I don't even know if a fireplug in front of my house works because God knows what's compromised underneath the street and the asphalt.
Yeah, they all work properly. The only one that doesn't is at the very end of Little Lake Harbor Boulevard, but they all have proper pressure.
Okay.
Carol Avenue was done, quite recently, was crowned and raised and got new... Right after Sandy. Let me also say, when you said God knows what's in the creek from Sandy, there was FEMA money that came in because that was through the federal government and they took every, they went through every area and removed everything that they can, that was paid for. So I don't think, I'm not saying that there's not anything in there now. I understand things move. But Sandy-related was handled through FEMA and it was called, I think, Bird Consulting Agency.
I just watched, I just watched the water come out through the sewer, through drainage over to marsh and I'm a little point in Carol Ave and I flooded away and my, my property's flooded on a daily basis. So just wanna see if the council can do anything about this or look into it and have something for us for next month.
No.
And it's not for next month?
No.
I won't, I can tell you, I am constantly in touch trying to do, get any project we can for marsh restoration. The reason I kept saying Thompson's Creek is because it's drilled into my head with marsh restoration and dredging of that and trying to find a way. But it was a, it was a challenge to do any kind of living shoreline and marsh restoration on the other side for that lanyard-lagoon project. I guess I'll say now, we had, we had, came in under budget on the lanyard-lagoon, which is off of King Fisher Lagoon on the other side. We came in under budget, we had money left over. We tried to push for a Phase 2 and using that extra money to basically just draw up plans and engineer to do more marsh restoration and try to backfill behind that and the DEP denied that request last week.
Will you build a road up?
So...
Other options?
You can't build a road up.
Because then you gotta build everybody's properties up and stuff, otherwise all the water's gonna run right off that road and flood everyone's properties. It's, it's a long process, but the road goes up a little bit then people put their property up, you know, six inches above the car.
So essentially, essentially, we're just sinking on Carol Ave.
So, essentially, the whole coastline of New Jersey is sinking. With the seminars that I go to and stuff, New Jersey is one of the fastest-sinking states in the country, but I believe it is number one on the East Coast, the fastest sinking shoreline.
So is there anything we can do, anything?
So there's a new thing that comes out, if you Google REAL, I think it is, the new laws that are coming out for the state of New Jersey, which is going to basically impact all of you, all up and down. LBI, you're not gonna be able to build down there anymore. The way that the new rules come out.
Is this coming out before the conference?
It's already out, yes, but...
It's already out, so we're good.
You Google it, yeah. As for the Tucker Creek, the complaints of Tucker Creek, I would not suggest calling the state police unless it's an emergency right at that situation. I would suggest calling the Department of Transportation, the Jersey Department of Transportation. They're the ones that are in charge of the buoys that are going out there, the marking of the areas. If there's a problem that's affecting that creek, they go out and handle it. That's where I'm, state police are not gonna do anything other than if you have a, sorry, that, if you, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief, if you have like a drunken driver out there or something like that, you call them, they're gonna handle it. The concerns you have, they're probably just say, like they've been telling you, "Yeah, we'll handle it, yeah, we'll handle it." It's the Department of Transportation that...
Well, I've called the state police and they just said, "Where are you?" "We're just for the creek." So, okay, we'll do it.
It's the Department of Transportation. They're the ones that go out in the boat and move all the buoys all along the area. Your best is to go through them, through that area, or give me a call and tell me where you're exactly talking about and give me a report and then you can finally talk.
All right, sure, thank you.
My name is Eva Winter, I live at 17 Carol Ave. I'm Mr. Porkowski's neighbor. Carol Avenue is a problem. And I mean, I know he's stressed it. I live exactly across from the marsh line that we're talking about and it's going down. That water is in my property, my property is sinking, our street is sinking. Yeah, we got some houses that have been built hotter and there are some originals that are lower, but our street is up and it's down and it's up and we all had to go through stormwater, floodwater to get here today. So it's definitely a problem, but I have a big question. I wanna know if anybody can answer this question because I can't get the right answer. Who maintains Carol Avenue? Whether it's plowing, salting, who is in charge of our street?
We are now. The county turned it, once the county repaved it, put the gas lines in there, new, I wanna say it's a new sewer. I'm just not 100% on the water, but there's a new...
Okay, new sewer.
Why do you make that much smaller sewer?
Well, because the sewers just boil water right into our...
I don't mean that, I mean the sanitary sewer where you flush the toilet because that, yeah, that, that's not the sewer I'm discussing. Sewer main that's in there. That was done right after, once they paved it, crowned it, did all the work that they had to do on it, they turned that street over to the municipality.
Okay, so then I would go back to that and say, because I keep getting, I'll go to the yard and ask for help and they're like, "Well, I think you're a county road." So I never, ever can get a straight answer as to who really maintains?
It's not a county road, it is our road.
Okay, so then, in the wintertime, I know you guys don't plow if anything over three inches, but going back to this marsh that is unobstructed and my house sits just like you guys, you're the marsh right there, my house is right here. You get those 60 mile an hour winter winds that come across that creek. My street then becomes an ice rink. And I, nobody come down and look at it because from Green Street, you can't even tell that this is occurring on our street. So when you bend around and go past Shelter Cove, we are either one underwater or two, it's an ice rink. And I have four or five neighbors on the street that all walk. Black labs for unusual reasons, we all have black labs. And I am sliding, I've been down that street and I am year-round in this neighborhood now. It's a problem. I know we have a new nice salt spreader. I was shown, Mike showed me the new spreader and things, but we are under, I don't know what to do about this, but Carol Avenue is a serious problem at this point. And the marsh is sinking, our houses are sitting there and at some point in probably October, I'm gonna have a river and it comes right up to my garage doors. It's a very serious problem. And on either side of me, I properties that are lower, those people have their cars, who knows where. And we're wearing waders to get up and down our street. And the fact that I had to get here tonight and drive through floodwaters, but I went by six or seven other streets. Now, some of them probably did, I heard Curly had some water already, but all the other western lagoons, nobody had water. But we are underwater already tonight. And the full moon's not till like Thursday. It's crazy, it is crazy. Carol Avenue needs a little bit more attention than just to say it was paved after Sandy, which was 14 years ago. Because right now, we're suffering. It's a big, major problem. And we have kids that go to school at the elementary school, we have people that work every day. And I walk my dog and I drive my car by the tides. Forget my, my boat. I gotta deal with the lagoon on that one, but that's a different story. But now it's walking and driving on Carol Avenue, it's a huge problem. So I just wanted to back up Mr. Porkowski and I have many other neighbors here they may wanna talk to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. How's the ice hockey man down on the third and fourth street? I haven't seen you a lot. Um, great job on the, um, Memorial Day parade, except I know that our, and wasn't not included. And there was a lot of cars on Wood Street, including a, um, public service bus that came having to get out in the middle of the break. Did you guys know that? So I thought I'd come and tell you.
No.
So usually when Joan, Jo- Jo-.
Joanne.
Joanne, thank you, I was one of the four, Joan. Joanne, it just never happened before, but I had really a lot and it was really packed at the end of the, you know, uh, up by, um, the Tampa Paul, old Tampa Paul, and it was bad, so I just wanted to let you know that I'm not sure what happened, but that guy had to back up all the way. He tried to back up all the way to Ram Road and I told him, dude, you can't, you're just gonna have to hit Philly Street, which he did. Turning onto Turk Street, so he wasn't able to get off of the street, but it was bad and were just tons of cars and they just all going ninety miles an hour. I wanted to make a suggestion on, on, but you can't do it on my street, on Wood Street, but I was thinking, um, because you have Water Street goes to the little street that used to be, well, it goes beyond the wall wall, right?
Sure.
You could make that street and then the next part goes to the, um, boats and that has its own entrance and exit, it's like a little view there, they could make that local traffic only. If you could make that, that would be wonderful for the, for them because a lot of towns use that for little tiny streets that have access other places.
Okay, thank you for your.
That's it. Suggestion.
No, I have a smile. Ladies and gentlemen, Carolyn Keane, eighty-four Curlew, I had two questions, um, and a thank you, um, to the yard. Um, put out a, my husband put a washer out yesterday and I said, you're not gonna pick that up, you got a call. He said, no, there's a truck that goes by and I said, no, you got a call. He said, well, if they don't pick it up, I'll bring it back in tonight. They picked it up, so thank you, but I got it, I told you so when I got home this afternoon, so, but thank you very, very much. Um, Beth asked my first question about the four hundred and forty, four hundred, whatever, over four hundred homes that they're gonna be building on Center Street. My question was, and I think it's the same question, is the borough involved? I know it's, those homes are being built in Little Egg or proposed to be built in Little Egg, but it is going to have to steer in pack. Cause what they're saying is, from what I'm reading, one line which I know that you have to take a grade with salt. A lot of that traffic's gonna come up through Center Street and then comes right through the middle of town, right? So I didn't know if anyone from our council was collaborating with the rainstorming or doing anything with the officials over in Little Egg to keep our residents up to date on that, but I think that's the same question that Beth asked, but I don't know the words of the show.
So, I'm not, I'm not collaborating with any of the Little Egg, I mean, I've been following it, but I've been following it on Facebook and stuff like that and the things. But, uh, I'd be, I guess, very blunt and honest. It's, I don't think that my opinion necessarily matters to what's happening with what they're doing in, in Little Egg. Um, from, and again, it's only from what I've read, is that that is a permitted use for that piece of land. It fits everything, all the specifications for that. So, I mean, at that point, I'm just a, a resident from another town voicing my opinion on it. Um, do I think that, yes, that's gonna be horrible adding that much more traffic to what's already a very congested intersection right in the middle of town? Yes, but it's, Route nine is a state road and five thirty-nine going out to, I mean, that's a county road, it's not even, the Borough of Tuckerton doesn't even have a say on those, those two specific roads. Um, we gave Center Street to the county, so that's not even a, that's not even a municipal road anymore that we really have a say over, over the traffic. I mean, we can make requests, we can ask, we can do that, but it's not something that really the Borough of Tuckerton has any control over.
So, so I guess something just popped in my mind and, um, so with four hundred additional homes also need more students into the schools. I know not the Tuckerton, Tuckerton Elementary, but we do through our school tax.
I believe it's a, I believe it's a fifty-five hundred per community though.
Yeah, okay.
Which again, it's only what I've seen on Facebook, but.
Cause you know what I was gonna, cause my.
That was, that was one of the arguments scored is that it won't, it won't affect with the kids going to school and the, and the fifty-five hundred per community. But I know it'll definitely impact our traffic.
And in the past, we have done a circulation plan with Little Egg Forever Township, um, to try to alleviate a lot of the congestion through the town where we would have a alternate bypass.
Through our spot, I think I was reading something on that too.
There was a couple of different ones, but again, um, we can, we suggest a lot of things, but they don't always have to listen to us.
That's what I, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure, for getting asked questions from the community perspective as well. So, so, um, the second one I had is just because I'm sheer, out of sheer curiosity. I, Renee and I were driving around, um, Tuckerton Beach the other day and there is, uh, I'm gonna use Shelter Cove because it's more visible. As you're driving by, there's a lot of water leaves there and great that they have that. How does the borough, are they tied in to our water and sewer? How, so I know all of us, whether you're here three months here, you're here twelve months ago, we have a flat fee, right, for the most part. How does, how do the marinas get, are they prorated per, I don't know, boat, per RV, how does that happen?
So when Shelter Cove Marina came in originally to get their approval, part of their approvals was, um, RV access. And there was, uh, certain areas that was designated on their property for RV access. So Shelter Cove pays a certain amount of units for water and sewer, just like you.
So it's not like Shelter Cove is flat fee three hundred and said whatever, you know, water, it's one per unit, okay, thank you.
No, it's per unit, yeah.
And to go back to the trash, cause we know that they use trash cans, I'm not trying to hurt anybody's business or anything, but will they be held to the same, um, codes as the private residents do with their trash collect?
Oh, it's like their trash cans are overflowing and stuff, absolutely.
Absolutely. And then there was another thing, all right, you're trying, I might have time to.
The only way, the only way we could do this is if they went with the private service and they had dumpsters that came, but that's not the case there. Um, because that wouldn't fall under our, our trash code.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions?
Rob, how about Ken's in Carol Avenue? Um, back to Carol Avenue flooding, what, Elin and Bo were speaking, like I said, I've been twenty-seven years now, that marsh area was always dry. Now it's wet, so if you think about that being wet, that's going down, right? The road goes down, the road is crowned like, I don't know your name, sorry, I don't see a tag. But the road is crowned for some reason, which doesn't make sense. The only reason that road is still unstructured, the new sewer pipes are holding the center of that road. If you look, there's the cracks, stress cracks in the asphalt. The road is crowded stuff for drainage, sea level, zero point in sea level. If you don't need a crown for floods, you need a crown for rain, that's what the rain drains are for in the streets. The crown does nothing but make it more deep when you back out of the driveway to two feet and then you go back up to eight inches, because it's high point of the crown. If the road was tapered out, ninety percent of those driveways would meet the crown of that road. I argued with the town, they paved it some years ago and they're raising it four inches. There's a benchmark, if that, if that marsh is going down, that benchmark is going down, you're always gonna read zero. Whether it's four inches down or four inches up, it's still a benchmark, it's locked in at zero point, that's agreed. If it moves, you're machine on there, the tremble, it's still zero. So the road's going down, the marsh is going down. And back to you, sir, Mr. Martin. Jersey's the worst one, I think we need your help. You just said it's worse, we all leave, Tuckerton's a big problem. It's sinking, they closed communities in Sound County along the Delaware River, we touched it, Emmett Duane came over and took the roads over, they're not there anymore. Do you want this out of Tuckerton?
We might not have a chance, that's what that real situation.
So let's try and solve it.
Yeah.
Let's bring the road up, put some riprap along the creek, get some signs saying no wait, total creek, like a whole creek is supposed to be no wait. There's only one sign from a homeowner who put it up.
We would love to do.
It's all working together.
I understand all that, we would love to do all that, but we also have other people that we, other divisions in the state of New Jersey that.
There's twenty-six houses on Carol Avenue, excuse me, four of them are safe. Out of the flood, thirty for the bend, everything else is below. Twenty-seven years, it's getting worse, 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 worse. You got ten mile an hour winds at the east today and they got eight inches of water at the low spots, it's unacceptable. And you guys don't live there, I understand and I appreciate it, but you gotta see reality, a lot of money in taxes, a lot of money in taxes, that's twenty-seven years. I bought my house for ninety-six thousand dollars, you know what it's worth today, we all do. I still don't wanna leave. You wanna stay? I think all of us should try to figure it out, the longer you understand sea level, that's what the elevation is. You're three point five feet above sea level, you're fifteen point eight above sea level. If that zero point benchmark goes down, who knows, the computer still reads zero. All right, and Matt, thank you so much, made her hear you from Miami, my beautiful wife.
Your honor, I know it's gonna come up that, uh, when Bo was up here and he was giving some really good testimony. It's gonna come up that, oh, he was one of the ones that went past the five minutes and you allowed it. But what's not taken into consideration is Jenny interceded and gave some great information that was vital to what he was asking. Um, and the same with Brian, so a lot of the time was taken up by council members and also our administrator. So that has to be brought into effect too. Normally with five minutes, it's five minutes, someone else.
I'm just trying to educate you guys on the sea level, I apologize, I'm just trying to educate on sea level. Crabs don't need a business on sea level. If the water comes up two feet above normal sea level, it's two feet above normal sea level. If it rains four inches, you get nothing. That's what I'm trying to say, if you, if you can sort of grasp that, sea level is what the ocean that they is.
Thank you.
That's true, Rob, there's other benchmarks, they should get a survey, you know, another one didn't sink.
Then it should sound green.
All right, thank you. Hello, hello, um, Renee, July, oh, three fifty, the Kingfisher. Um, this is kind of light and airy, but the T V A, um, had their, one of their, uh, three concerts for the summer. And we raised two hundred and eighty-five dollars for the birth pantry. From the beach came down and donated, so I just wanted to let everybody know that, so, thank you.
Thank you, that's great.
One coming up.
That's off.
Yeah, one's coming up this.
August.
Uh, August right here, okay.
Yeah. But that's the goodest, I'm grateful you know.
She says me.
Thank you for the T V A.
Go Grates on twenty-third. Oh, the ball, oh, it's swatted in.
Yeah, all right.
Can I come?
All right.
Okay.
Well, the next person's, thank you for the rest.
It's all right.
August ninth.
The August ninth is the concert.
Okay.
One seventy-five Maple Avenue.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear what you said.
Steve Newman, one seventy-five Maple Avenue, number.
Maple Avenue.
Yes. Behind the wheels. I'd just like, um, to bring it to the attention of the lantern flies that are up and down Great Bay Boulevard. In my back property, I have pictures of hundreds of thousands. And we can't even go in our backyard and their discharge is black, it's ruining our furniture, everything. It's, it's been going on for four years, I'm out there every day, it's simple dawn and water trying to kill these things. I have pictures to show you, um, in my phone if you'd like to see them. But, um, I'm bringing it to the attention, I don't know if the borough can do something about this, I know they spray from mosquitoes. And I believe this is gonna get worse, cause this is the fourth year that, um, it's very disgusting. And, um, somebody else can take up my five minutes, so I'll probably, that's pretty much all I have.
Steve, are there trees of heaven back there?
Yeah, trees of heaven exactly is what it is, last year I spent six grand in getting rid of them. This year, it doesn't seem to make a difference because they cross the street of, I live on Maple and my backyard's on Great Bay Boulevard. So they're still coming from both sides and both sides in the other direction.
Right.
Um, the Bo's all, Bo's our property and then the gas company property, which is about six acres of those trees. And it's a really challenging project for me, I can't even have company over, um, it's a disgusting thing. And I'm just wondering, uh, maybe if you can research it and you back to me.
I can call the extension service of the county and see what they recommend. I know the tree of heaven is the, uh, primary habitat for the lantern flies in the mid-stage. And they multiply breed and live their whole life cycle on those trees and surrounding area and they try to spread obviously, but.
Well, Google says they move on after three years and I'm on my fourth year, so that's just.
And the Red Mill, we had the issues with them, the county took the trees out, since they took the trees of heaven, we haven't had any issue with them at all.
Right, well, even next door to our local drinking pole, there was a problem there and it seemed they took the trees out and they're gone.
Right.
But I can only get the trees out of my property, I can't do anything else and, and for me to come down and complain about it, you know, was, was a big thing.
Fortunately, we have no authority over the private residences that own that other properties, but I'll check with the extension service tomorrow and see what they recommend.
Well, it runs past Seaport or Great Bay Boulevard and it probably all the way down to, um, you know, another mile or two.
Right.
And just one other thing, at the end of, uh, Great Bay Boulevard and, um, radio where the construction's going on. There's a big fifty by fifty pond there that is also probably drawing lava and bugs and stuff like that. So the bugs are getting worse in the town and if we're having all these events, it's gonna affect them also. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that has a question or comment this evening?
Good evening, council mayor, uh, John, seventeen Carroll. So I'd like to speak a little bit to Carol Avenue, um, flooding and just maybe some questions. I've noticed, we've noticed there that a lot of the flooding starts coming up out of the sewers. Um, is there a possibility of putting a, uh, one-way valve on those sewers to prevent some of that from coming up? We won't fix it completely, but it's, it does start there, um, and that might help. Does anyone in the council have any feedback on?
We, we have used them, um, and not to great results. Uh, they'll work well for maybe six months and then it silt unfortunately from the water ebbing and flowing and coming off the streets. Sometimes they lock open, sometimes they lock closed, they have been an issue, I'm not certain if they have any updated type, uh, one-way valves or, um, clapper valves, let's check.
So they.
Check valves.
Okay.
Um, that's something that we, we could look into, but, uh, unfortunately we had bad results with, uh, the ones that they had. And even if they do lock close as soon as the water comes up over the bulkhead and comes up to, uh, ground level, it's all saturated.
Yeah, I, does the manufacturer not support their?
I have, I have valves on my street, this is Kingfisher.
Yeah.
They work good one way and they work bad another. If you got rainwater, a lot of heavy rainwater and stuff.
Right.
They'll run out, so when you have a flood in time, you can go to the bulkhead, there's not enough pressure to open them things up. So it takes a long time for that water to back out. Cause they work great in heavy rain where the lagoons are lower and the water will run out fast. But when it comes over top of the bulkheads and stuff.
But it sounds as though at Carroll Avenue, you have a lot of it coming over the empty marsh.
Um, not as, I mean, it really starts with the sewer right there.
So you're flooding mostly on the sewer?
It's where it starts and then it starts running down the sides of the streets and then it keeps coming up and it goes across. Um, it's not like you, my, my house is directly across from the wash and it's not like it's coming out of the wash right there.
Okay, so it's not coming out, okay, it's coming out of the storm creek.
Yes, that's where it absolutely starts. So, and again, I would ask for assistance on Carol, um, and the council has not been down Carol in a long time. Take a drive down on one of those days where there's a lot of rain, full bloom, uh, winds are out of the north, northwest, um, that's where we see it. In fact, we, we drove through flowers. Um, my second point is, I'm a resident of this community now for five years and I drive my Tuckerton grill every day. And for five years it's been closed and just sitting there. And I wanna know from the council what, what is being done from the township to try and do something with that property? Instead of leaving a old, dilapidated, smelly building?
Unfortunately, it's private property, so we really have no say of the intended use. And it, it's up to the, the owner of the property and, um, who they're gonna sell it to.
Who owns the property? The bank that has ownership there?
That's a good question. Yeah, the valves that back and forth from the banks own it, I don't know if there's another per, private buyer that bought it now. But he's absolutely right, there's nothing we can do.
Somebody should know.
See it ruined by the bank or is it ruined by a private person?
Private.
I know it's been for sale, it's been up for sale and then one, at one point it was, uh, one point one million dollars. Um, from what I was told, they made, somebody made an offer of a million and he turned it down. So, believe me, I'd like to see that thing, something go with it too.
Yeah.
Just as much as anybody else. Uh, right now it's getting to be an eyesore.
It is, and smells.
Unfortunately, once they sold that liquor license, the chance of it selling for a restaurant or bar just alleviated, went right away.
So can you expand on that just a little bit about the liquor license? Can the township not authorize another liquor license, how does that work?
It goes.
Or, or.
Yeah, it goes by population, regardless of how they were issued.
We have seven, we have seven liquor licenses in the town, we should have.
So, the state of New Jersey, this population, for every thirty-five hundred population, you're only allowed one liquor license. Tuckerton borough's population is three thousand five hundred and seventeen, per the census, we have seven liquor licenses. So, that's grandfathered in, we can't do anything with that, with regards to where you're talking about. Per the tax records, which is, you know, facts right now that we have for the tax records, it's owned by a bank. Um, who can come in and request to see who, what bank owns it, to have that information, it's also on our, uh, tuckerton.com, tuckertonborough.com. Um, as for what we can get involved, usually the only way we can get involved is when taxes are not being paid. And fortunately, they are paying their taxes and they're up to date on their water and sewer, although they. And fortunately, they are paying their taxes and they're up to date on their water and sewer, although they canceled that. So they paid for a disconnection today. So there's really nothing that we can get involved in on that right now. There is, there is code violations on that piece of property. Our code enforcement officer will write warnings to us to handle it, to take care of it. And I believe anytime that they did have any issues, they handled it, whatever code violations were an issue. But our code enforcement officer can enlighten you if you want to stop them and give you all that information.
Okay, and I will add one more thing, there is a way that you can get a liquor license back there. And that's putting in a 101 room hotel. Because the state will give you a liquor license if you have 101. Well, that might create some other issues. So I don't think that would be a good approach.
You don't want, right now, you don't want the condoms there, I don't think you want a hotel there.
No, yeah, how about a brewery?
Yeah, brewery.
Wouldn't need a liquor license.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else this evening? Anthony.
Good evening, Attorney General. Anthony Scaglio on 125 Curlew Road. Mayor, just want to let you know, like I told you, at the environmental meeting, the Tuckerton Beach Association donated the flag to the park. So I put up, it's a five by nine flag, looks a lot better on the pole because that alone was really small.
Okay.
And it was sent to the VFW to be disposed of properly.
Okay.
So, it looks good, you from far away.
Very good, thank you.
Another thing, when it comes to the check valves on the streets, it worked on Curlew, then it worked on Kingfisher. Granted, it comes over the bulkhead, it comes over the bulkhead, all bets are off. And the same thing, it wouldn't work on Little Egg because it comes from the marshland. And there's nothing you can do to stop that unless, like I talked about, if we made a berm that kept it from, you know, coming off to the street from, from the bay over the marshland. But the check valves definitely worked, and they do have newer ones. One was used on the west side, I forgot which one. It was Marlin?
Marlin.
Yeah, it was Marlin, and I, I think it worked on that one too. But my point is that it, it can work, the nuisance floods are gone on Curlew Road, we don't have them anymore. Now, there's some issues where all the way down the end, there's no check valve on that one. So that one starts to work its way up down the end, so there's people at the end of the street that are not that happy about it. They want to put a check valve on that one too. I think, like you said, when the street gets done, if the street gets done, that's-
That's when we get it, yes.
Right.
Because the stormwater, there's stormwater regulations a lot of times, the DOT and the DAP come in and regulate what we can do. As for the check valves, I know that the councilman said there's some issues, but it's not a no. Like if we start looking at it, I'll get the engineer involved. Parker is the one that we're looking at right now, Parker Brode is on the list to get fixed because there's some concern there. So Carroll's not out of the question, it's just, there's a process that has to happen.
That's the point, that's the point I wanted to make, that it's something that you can look at at the time when it's the appropriate time. But the one thing that doesn't work is if it's high tide and you get rain, the street's getting flooded anyway because there's nowhere for the water to go, and then you'll get flooded by rainwater instead of saltwater. So there's the pros keeping the nuisance tides away, but the time is when you get heavy rain and high tide, the speech, exactly. So that was the only thing I would say, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Anthony. Are there any other comments or questions this evening?
Close the public forum.
Sorry.
Renee, I'd like to send a, a public report on the favor.
Motion, please.
All right, I agree. Okay, I'm going to send it to a juror, all in favor.
Aye.
And then, folks, it's thank you. Thank you for coming, we've had some very interesting discussions today. And we'll be meeting again next month.